Which brings us to approval of the agendas. Any changes?
None from staff?
Make a motion to approve.
All those in favor, aye. Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to proclamations and presentations, tab two. It's a very super commerce update with Mr. Berry.
Good afternoon. So you should have my report in your packets. I would like to make a correction. I'd like to turn my report in early for the month of January. Then it says December. I have a time motion. Anyway, there was not four new members, there were six new members. Two new members came in around the very end of the month. So we had six, that's a good healthy start to the year. You can see what we have in visits throughout the month and the upcoming events. I would like to let you know that our monthly luncheon, that is on the 26th, Alan Hayes, who provides an election, is going to be the speaker. And he's doing an overview of the 2020 election. So it's going to be really well. Our luncheon in January, that Mr. Jury spoke at, we had 151 people, which is by far above our large crowds, and then with 112. So 151 people, it was very exciting to see. Thank you all for being there, for your support. You see the other things here, upcoming, our golf tournament. And again, I'm going to keep this legislative breakfast on your updates. But I would like to let you know, the tickets for that are already selling very heavily. It will sell out. It's close to, well, there's 80 something tickets sold, and we can only have no lower than 200. So it's on the Chamber Alliance of Lake County's website. It's $20 a ticket. It's going to be a very, very good event. Any questions?
Actually, I do have a question. It doesn't have to do with the material you presented. But I am curious on what your visitor numbers were for 2019, if you have that available. Or have an idea, even if it's not precise number.
I know that that number is actually being calculated. It's a number of different sources that we have to compile information. I know that in 2018, it was a little over 1,300 people came through our doors looking for information. I will say that probably we're going to be a little higher than that, probably around 1,500 for 2019. And I could have that for you the next month when I make my report, I'll make it part of my report. Along that line, there's something of interest that you might be interested in. You know we're open Saturdays, 10 to 2, starting with the event season. We are going to extend those hours, starting with the main streams of barbecue, and extend those hours for a little bit longer during the event season. Because almost every Saturday, there's big stuff going on, and our office must be open longer.
That's great. Thank you very much, appreciate the information.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Which brings us to tab three, quilted on our presentation by the fire department.
Thank you, Mayor Bogus, and good evening, council members for the audio record discussion with the fire chief. And I'll tell you right off the bat, I do not feel, I do not feel worthy to introduce this agenda, because I am so humbled by this person, Mrs. Judy Crowe. She contacted the city. She lives here in the city, she's a resident. And she has a mission, like those of us in public safety and all of us in public service, we have missions, multiple missions. This duty has a mission. And her mission is to take a craft skill that she has, making obviously beautiful quilts, and using those to honor military service for our veterans. So she reached out to the city, and between the police department and the fire department, we have eight veterans. So Judy is going to make a presentation tonight of quilts. So, Mrs. Judy, would you join me up here? She has with her her husband, Mr. Crowe. So Judy Crowe.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody. I'd like to introduce a friend of mine, Lisa Monjovi. She's a member of the Lake County Quilt Guild, ASAMI. She's the youngest member, as she likes to tell everyone. And she is a grandmother. But what makes her special is that she has a husband, a son, and a son-in-law who are currently serving. And she also has a very large quilting machine, which helps to get these quilts done and out very quickly. So she gives her time and her expertise as required. I'd like to tell you about the Quilts of Valor Foundation. I came here as a representative of the Quilts of Valor Foundation, which organization was established in 2003, when Catherine Roberts had the idea of comforting veterans with quilts during the time her son was deployed in Iraq. Since the foundation's inception, over 240,000 quilts of valor have been awarded, and I am pleased to say I've made about 150 of those. The quilts I award this afternoon were pieced and assembled by hand, using an electronic needle, my sewing machine. I have personally made over 140, probably 150, each one different from every other. I cut and pieced the tops and provide the backing fabric and the binding. All quilts are made of 100% cotton, top, back, and batting. Since I have been in Florida, closing in on five years, my quilts of valor have been quilted by either Pam Leece or Marilyn Finnegan, women who have bought those enormous machines, quilting frames, and devote them to quilting for quilts of valor. My friend Lisa Monjovi also does that. Lisa is quite special, as I mentioned, because she has members of her family which are currently serving. People who make quilts of valor have their own reason for volunteering time, treasure, and energy, but one attribute links us, a desire to welcome home and thank each servicemember to whom we present a quilt. We have deep respect and admiration for all veterans, no matter the branch of service, no matter the time, circumstance, and place of that service. And each of us was and is keenly aware of the sacrifice required by that service, both on active duty and post-deployment. Today's recipients are extraordinarily special, for they serve us still in our police and private departments. You will note at the bottom of the labels of the quilts, you won't see it, but the recipients will, there is a remembrance to Major Stephen Rush, who was killed in Afghanistan in 2005. Stephen was the son of a close friend, and was only two months younger than my oldest son. His mother, Sue Rush, is now the president of the Board of Directors of Quilts of Valor. Major Stephen Rush was the commander of Operation Red Wings, an attempted rescue mission in the Kundar Province of Afghanistan in 2005, depicted in the book and feature film Lone Survivor. Prior to his career in the military, Stephen was a starring pitcher for Army's baseball team at West Point. He was on track to pitch in the major leagues when the military again came calling. Baseball was his dream, but it always came second to military service. I made my first quilts of valor to honor Stephen in 2005, and all my quilts of valor carry dedication to him. As a single member of the Quilts of Valor Foundation, I am working to make sure that veterans are remembered, thanked, and honored for their sacrifice. I hope that these quilts will serve to remind you and others that your sacrifice has not been forgotten. We hope you will use it and display it as a badge of honor and thanks, but also as our acknowledgement of the personal cost of your years of active duty in the military. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I know that there would be a display at the time, would you like to?
Yeah, I would like to have you meet the fire chief and the police chief at the quilt over at the wall of appreciation. We're going to take a couple photographs. While that's going on, we're going to ask the mayor and the vice mayor to then join for a second set of photographs there as well. And then our final one will be the two quilters together at the location as well.
I would like to present this quilt to Richard Keith. I personally took the pattern because it looks like a propeller kicking up dust, and he was in the air. So this is for you, and I do this. You can't say no.
Mayor, councils, I just, you know, and the audience, Chief Loomis and I are accepting these beautiful quilts.
They are being accepted on behalf of the veterans. And we asked the veterans what they preferred. They asked that the quilts be presented at the Public Safety Complex, at a private acceptance by their respective chiefs and our quilter. So this will be presented, the A will be presented to the police chief and the fire chief today, here in a public setting, and then a more private setting at the Public Safety Complex. They will present it at each veteran, and that was their choice, and we asked them what they preferred. So right now, what we'll do is we'll have the chief join you there, and Mr. Rumble, and yes, there we go. We're going to just take a couple photographs, and then the mayor and vice mayor can make their way down there for a second set of photographs. Thank you.
I wanted to say that there is another recipient of one of our quilts of valor sitting in the back of the room there, Gary Santoro. He received one at Royal Harbor about six months ago.
So we'll go ahead and ask the mayor and the vice mayor to join you there, and we're going to do one more photograph, Mark. And then, go ahead, and we've got one more, and that would be the two quilters. And if we could have the mayor and vice mayor still there with the two quilters, and then We're going to go ahead and proceed with the rest of the meeting. If you plan to depart us, this would be a good time. You'll be fine. Okay, then we're just going to leave everything there for the duration of the meeting, if that works for you.
It works.
All right. Mayor, back to you.
And once again, thank you very much. And that brings us to swearing in by City Attorney, Disclosure of Expartee Communications.
Thanks, Mayor. We have two on the agenda today, six to seven, relating to the annexation resounding of an acre and a half of lane park cutoff. If you're here today to give testimony about that, or if you want to speak, our rules require that you spend this time and be sworn in. We've got Mike. Anybody else, as an applicant, anyone else in the audience that wants to speak about this lane park rezoning? All right, you saw me swear a firm testament, you gave them this cause, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so we got it. Thank you. Thank you all. And when you come to the podium, they'll announce your name and address with clerk. And members of the city council, do any of you have any ex parte communications regarding this application that you need to disclose? See a bunch of shaking hands, which doesn't pick up in the minutes very well.
No, sir, not.
I think I hear five now.
No, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Which brings us to reading of all the ordinances and resolutions submitted. Let's go back.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one resolution and two ordinances of second reading. Resolution 2020-03, a resolution of the City of Taveras, Florida, amending the 2020 fiscal year adopted budget for the City of Taveras representing the First Amendment to the adopted budget and providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date. Ordinance 2020-01, and ordinance of the City of Taveras amending the boundaries of the city by annexing approximately 1.0 acres of land located at 12549 lane park cutoff, rezoning said property from Lake County Light Industrial District LM to City of Taveras Industrial I, subject to the rules, regulations, and obligations ordained by the City of Taveras Council, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance 2020-02, an ordinance of the City of Taveras, Florida, amending the Taveras Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map 2020, providing for a change in future land use designation on approximately 1.50 acres of land located at 12549 lane park cutoff from county urban low density to city industrial I and D, providing for separability and conflicts, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hoden. Which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to call any items for discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull item tab five, please.
All right, so we'll pull tab five. Any motions based on their opinion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda of mine in item five, tab five.
Do you have a motion in a second? All those in favor, aye, five to zero. Which will bring us to tab five, resolution number 2020-03, first budget amendment for fiscal year 2020, Ms. Hoden.
I think we'll go ahead and have the question asked, and then Ms. Hoden can answer the question.
The question I have on here, I know this is a formality to go ahead and do this, but I have a question regarding the amount of $638,816, and that is 1501-515-64-25.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bogus. That is the, in the future projects, line item for the community development department, and that represents the project carried forward for the comp plan study and also for the rehab renovations for the building department. Now, we will be coming back when we bring the second budget amendment for the next quarter. Any troupes or adjustments? I anticipate that number to go down a little bit before the next amendment, but that is what that represents.
So that number's a cluster of different projects, basically, in there, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions regarding these tabs? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
No, second. All those in favor, aye. Which brings us to the resolutions, which we haven't done today, and brings us to ordinances. And we have two of second reading. We'll move to tab six, ordinance 2020-01, annexation and rezoning of 1.50 acres located at 12549 lane park cutoff, community development. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor. Subject property is located at 12549 lane park cutoff, and is approximately 1.5 acres in size. The land is presently zoned as county light industrial district, and the applicant is proposing that the property be annexed and rezoned to city industrial. Proposed zoning industrials is compatible with surrounding zoning and the existing industrial landings of the property. There is a building on property currently, but I don't believe it's occupied, but it is set to be in industrial use. The annexation of this property has been reviewed by the city's annexation policy, and it's determined that the city can properly service this location. The owner has been currently seeking future land use, a future land use amendment to industrial to be compatible with the proposed zoning. At their December 19 meeting, the planning and zoning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of ordinance 2020-01, and staff recommends that the city council moves to approve ordinance 2020-01.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. And I know we've received any requests to speak in the audience, so is there anyone who wants to speak at this time? Otherwise, I'm going to close public input and look to council. All right, council, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald or the owner? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll second.
Do you have a motion in a second? All those in favor, aye. Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to the companion, ordinance tab seven, order 2020-02, SSLM, 1.5 acres located at 12549 lane park cutoff, community development, once again, which I'm sure we can do the appropriate reading for you.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2020-02 proposes a small scale amendment to the future land use map, changing the property from county urban low density to city industrial to be compatible with closed zoning.
All right. Once again, I didn't have any input from the public, so I'll go ahead and close public input. Anybody in council have any questions or have motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you have a motion in a second? All those in favor, aye. Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to general government, tab eight, various historical society transition agreement agreement with community services. Is that the issue you want to propose? That'll be you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. Previously, city council entered into arrangement with the historical board to lease the old train.
No, I don't think that's what I'm saying.
To lease the old fire department to the historical society to operate a museum out of. Well, that Monumentous Project and the historical board came to you again later and asked that they turn over the operations of any future history museum to the City of Taveras, which you and we have agreed to. We are now in a conceptual phase to plan to determine the renovation costs for that train station, and that plan will be delivered to you at the next council meeting on the 19th. What we have before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding between the city staff and the historical board president. Is Brenda here? I can't see past the podium.
No, but there's another board member that's here. Diane Ayton is here. Brenda is not here. And a third board member is here, Patty Burling. So we have three, two of the three board members here, I think.
A ten.
Who else is here?
Diane Ayton is second here.
Diane, that's what I just said. Who, Patty's on the board? Where's Patty? Oh, Patty's sitting right next to Ms. Burling. So we have three of the four board members here.
Thank you, John. So what we have for you is a memorandum of understanding that we developed over time with the historical board. We have submitted it to the president. Brenda Smith will review. She has executed the agreement. It is before you for discussion and such. And I highlight a few of the high points of the agreement. I realize it was in your agenda pack for your review earlier, but if I could go over a few of the highlights. It really speaks about the lease agreement that we held with them in 2013 for the train station, and that agreement is essentially terminated when the board asks to no longer be in the history museum business. We speak about the transfer of the artifacts in inventory that the historical society is taking care of now, and that those items will not be turned over to the city until we have a viable space for them. And if it is in the train station, then not until the certificate of occupancy is then issued. So all those artifacts, the agreement states, stays in the care and custody of the board of the historical society until at such time the city is prepared to accept them. And we're suggesting in the agreement that they continue to operate in their current location. We provide some annual funding to them as we have for many years. We will not, the city will not accept new donations until this is a formal transition. And once a certificate of occupancy is issued on any future building, the train station, the city then will own, operate, and manage the museum, and will accept the historical inventory. And the historical board would serve as an advisory source for us. And the old museum would continue on as space for the historical society to greet patrons who might be interested in donating items. So we're asking you to give us direction on the agreement. If it's something that is acceptable to you, then we fully execute it and we move on with the plans as they presented to you. So thank you. We are here to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I don't have any input from the public to speak, but is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this topic?
Diane Ayton, 714 North Sinclair Abrams Avenue, as board member to the various historical society. I just want to thank the city and its residents for taking this on. We do want to preserve our history, and we think it's a very important part of the city. So thank you so much for taking this on, and we appreciate you for this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Then I'm going to close it to public input, and open it up to council. Anyone in council have questions?
Okay. Yes, Ms. Rogers, I noticed you said that we're waiting on the conceptual plan. You said we'll have that at the next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just, I mean, there's a lot of information here, and I just, I would really like to see the concept plan before we move forward on this. It just seems like, you know, maybe we're putting cart before the horse on this, because I know that when this came before the board a while back, we had discussed, you know, putting this in the budget and we can beat with other projects. So right now, we don't know if this is going to be a million dollars, it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars. We really don't know. I mean, I'm all about preserving history. I think it's great, especially, you know, here in the city, it varies. But I think, you know, we also need to be physically responsible. You know, I just, I think that, you know, perhaps we could maybe look at tampering this until we get the concept plan in hand. I would like to do that before we move forward on this.
Well, I actually served on the historical board some years back. I was the treasurer. And I really appreciated everything that was put together and how, it's an interesting place. If you haven't been in there, I recommend you go. I'm sure Ms. Burling would love to tour it with you. I've got a couple of concerns. Have we explored other sites? I know ideally, we've been talking about the historical train station, that and the monumental financial responsibility that we're going to commit ourselves to. We have so many other projects in this city that we need to do, and it's also going to be off the beaten path. I would hate to have to wait three, four years for this to come together. If we have something maybe in Woodin Park that we could identify as a location, you know, the chamber has 1,300, 1,400 people that go through there on a yearly basis. This way, people would be able to enjoy the historical museum, maybe its membership would grow as well. There's a train exhibit I know that was donated for kids to have interaction with the museum. That would be the perfect location for that. So I would like to see us explore other options, that maybe the history museum would have a home in a quicker turnaround, not wait three, four years down the road, and if it gets funded. Because quite honestly, as Mr. Singer said, I've got a concern with the dollars that are attached to that, and it's a big commitment for the city. It's a whole new department that you're taking on, and we do things right in Taveras.
And thank you for that. I just to give you a little bit of history, but I think we did take the historical board president, Brenda, for this, for this night here at the moment, and Amanda Bogus was our project liaison at the time. Several months ago, we actually toured the train depot in Woodin Park as a possible option, kind of a move-in ready space, albeit smaller than the big fire station. And Brenda did move that idea forward to the board and the community members, and we're not interested at the time in entertaining that idea. I hate to speak for her, but that is, so that, that is where that landed. But we did, we did tour the site. It is a nice building, and so, good point, and thank you for that.
Well, and again, I'm just afraid that if the historical society is out of sight, it's going to be out of mind for our residents, our visitors. it's going to be out of mind for our residents, our visitors. And again, up the priority is the financial component. There's going to be a spot that it could go into, though maybe not at the same size, but maybe eventually it can go to something else or what have you. I think it's important to preserve our history and to be viable in, you know, in the city. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I do. I just want to clarify some things just for everyone here that may not understand this. So what, what we're seeing here, what you're telling us, is that the Historical Society as we knew it, what we did this contract, no longer exists.
They still have board, and there's still a membership, but they do not want to operate a museum anymore.
Okay. So I have a lot of respect for the Historical Board, but do they have a dog in the fight now? I mean, if the city, if now, if the city is totally financially responsible for this, do they, are they wanting to put money toward, even though they're, they just have their board, do they want to put money toward the renovation of the fire station?
I'm not on that impression that they have a veritable to do that.
Okay. And I want to agree with, with Councilmember Singer and Councilmember Weygus that, yeah, I'm real concerned about the money. I love the idea of it being at the fire station. It's a brand-new building. It's a beautiful building. It's a replica building of an old fire department, is that correct? Old, old train station, I mean, the old train station. So it's already an historically, you know, replicated building. What a perfect place, and we save all that money, because I'm in no way going to vote to spend a lot of money to go out and renovate that fire station if it's all falling on the city, when downtown would be perfect, especially with the chamber being right there. I mean, people come into the chamber. I know you had asked about the visitors, but wow, I mean, you've got your chamber there, and you've got people coming in, and if you have the, if we had our museum right there, look at all the money that we've saved. I think it's the logical place for it. I think if we met with whatever board exists still, I think they would have to come to that realization that it's the biggest thing for the buck. I mean, it really is. That's all I have to say.
Now, on the concept plan, that was for the old fire station, correct?
Yes.
There's nothing that's been done to find out what the cost would be to put them in the renovated train.
Okay. If we could guess, it's probably in the hundred thousand dollar range to the cost of putting a museum in any space, or the vignettes and the presentation areas and the lighting and such. So you would have to put some money in for them, because it is a room with white walls. So that's just a very rough estimate.
So right now, the concept plan that we're waiting on is to do it in the old train station?
That's correct. Part of that delivery will be the cost to renovate that building.
At that rate, we can bring the cost to renovate the current train station, so you will have the two costs.
And how much money have we already invested?
You budgeted, you all voted on twelve thousand five hundred during your budget session to do a concept plan on renovating the train station. So seven years ago, you...
The fire department.
The fire department, I'm sorry. So seven years ago, you entered into an agreement for the fire department to become the, the history museum. Then this past year, you voted to spend twelve thousand five hundred to hire a professional firm to go through the entire building, brick by brick, every piece, and tell you what it would cost to renovate it for a history museum that would stand the test of time, you know, to be here forever. We're about eighty percent complete. I think we're wrapping up this week. We'll have the report to you at your next board meeting, and we can also add to that the cost to retrofit the train station in Wooton Park. Then you'd have both costs before you, and we'll give you square footages. You know, there's a big difference in square footage, there's a difference in location. We can get you those, both those costs for your next meeting.
And just for everyone else's transparency here, when I was the liaison before Mr. Stevenson took over, when we met at the train station base, I didn't suggest that they may be a temporary location until we were able to raise the funds, either through donations or running a gift shop to help raise the money, so that the city would have to provide the full amount to renovate the train station. But once again, we were voted against about even being a temporary position, that they wanted to go full tilt towards the fire department, so. Do we have a motion on this topic?
What is the motion?
I know that you'd ask...
I think I heard somebody ask they might consider putting a motion forward about tabling the item until such time as you get the numbers.
Yeah, that's a good one. I say let's table this item until we get the numbers.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us to town, our Economic Development Strategy 2020 update with Mr. Tweedy.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, and distinguished members of the Mayor's Youth Council. For the record, Bob Tweedy, our Economic Development Director. The city's economic development team has developed a long-term economic development strategy, and that was originally developed at its inception about ten years ago. The plan is both geographical and component-specific, focusing on twelve economic development components throughout five quadrants in the city. Although the overall vision and objectives remain focused in the same direction, it's prudent to update the plan on a regular basis, expand upon successes and milestones achieved, and seek opportunities for new ones. So each year, the Economic Development Horizon Team meets the Discovery Horizon Team as the Vice Mayor, Ms. Fister, Mr. Dury, and myself, and we recently met, took a look at the plan, and reviewed it, made some updates. And I'm just going to go through a little high-level presentation here of some growth areas over, over the last year or so, where we've achieved success that we can build them on, and then we can talk about any, any items that need to be addressed or updated. So there is your, your map, your focus area map, which, which identifies the different quadrants. You can see the cluster there in the downtown area that focuses on the downtown retail, commercial, entertainment district, and then along the 448 corridor, the hospital area out to the Western Gateway, and then down the 19 corridor, and then on over to the 561, 448, or 48 interchange, where we have the Commerce Park. So on the, the medical sector front, we've, we've seen some tremendous growth on the Waterman, Advent Health Waterman campus. As you can see here, the construction of the new emergency department, which also houses an expanded women and infants department, a brand-new four-story building that was just completed in 2019, and the hospital just continues to grow, as you're all well aware, and that has stimulated a lot of other expansion over in that area, in that quadrant. As you know, the, the outwater apartment facility just to the, to the northeast of the hospital, two-hundred-and-forty units, just about to double in size. They've completed their, their expansion plan, I think Mike, they've, they've got all their permits and entitlements, and they're ready to move forward on, on the expansion of that in the, in the coming months. So that'll be doubled. The Avalon Park Group project is, is about to get underway. They've already got construction going on, the charter school, and some, some residential and commercial developments to follow. The Medical Village, otherwise known as Lakeview Center, across from the hospital, we've seen continued growth. We continue to work with our development partners in that area, new practices that have opened in the last year. I think there have been two or three new ones, and you can see a couple that are under construction now, and I think there's a couple in the pre-development phase as well right now. On the right there, you see a new, a new, the dialysis center being built, or I'm sorry, that's on the bottom on the right, you see a, a new podiatry practice that is under construction. Downtown professional services have expanded quite a bit last year, from builders to realtors to travel agents, we have it all in the downtown, and it continues to grow. The downtown entertainment district, from craft cocktails to shakurri, from, from sushi to pinball, you can, you can do that all on our downtown entertainment district. And right now, I know of only one vacant property that's available for rent, that, that is probably about to be occupied. I just spoke to the property owner a little earlier today, and they've got a lot of interest, and that would be the, the former Logodora space over in the, in the hotel complex that I think is about to go under. The arts and culture scene has been enhanced with the arrival of the Lake County Museum of Arts, and all those patrons will be able to go across the street soon, hopefully get a nice Italian dinner, and enjoy some of the other amenities in our entertainment area. Our Commerce Park is full. This, this photo depicts a recent complex development of six five-thousand square feet, square-foot industrial buildings that are all but one occupied right now. I'm seeing that the property owners out, and Mike and I have talked to at least one property owner out there recently, who's getting ready to develop some, some new, turn some new dirt over there in the industrial park, so things are bustling out there. New arrival this year, Sunday Cool, out of the Commerce Park, but here just off our downtown, this, this really unique and niche apparel company, which has moved in. They, they only moved in just in May or June of this, this past year, and they are already, they're employing over sixty full-time people. You can see there, they've got a, a full-time FedEx truck there loading, loading merchandise every day, and they're already under an expansion. They know if sooner or later got underway with their operation there, then they have to double in size, which, which is taking place now. Seaplane Base, Jones Brothers, our base commercial operator. When I got here in 2015, they were operating one single-engine airplane out of, out of a closet, really, was their business operations center over in a corner of the, the prop shop building. And last year, they've quadrupled in size in their physical space, moving into the old trailhead building and refurbishing that, and they've gone now to a fleet of five aircraft. Their charter business, their scenic flight business, and particularly their flight training business is, is growing wildly. And on the right there, you can see that the first phases of reconstruction of our seaplane base are underway with the, with the recent removal of pilings, and soon we will be, we anticipate getting the green light from the insurance company and move forward with the construction plans. Special events are thriving, from, from barbecues and contests to air shows and seaplane fly-ins. We're drawing a lot of people with over twenty events in our downtown, and they're all, they're all looking. What we used to call fast food, we now call quick service and casual dining, which you can enjoy out on our 19 corridor, and that would be all thanks to the development of the various crossroads public plaza, which is rapidly filling up, and the adjacent out parcels. And once you're done with all that fast food, you can soon, hopefully, head down and get on to, soon-to-come bike trail, and, and head on over to Mount Dora and back and burn off some of those calories and cap off your evening with a beautiful sunset cruise on our new, beautiful new outdoor honeymoon, which is located down at the marina. And I just would add that we have included in this sector of, or this, this component of the plan, the, the trail project as a, as a major, major item. You know, there's a lot of momentum moving forward. We've had a lot of talk about it. I think Mr. Dillon is up in, up in Tallahassee right now, beating the drum of the state for, for funding on that. Mr. Dury, Mr. O'Keefe, the whole team has been pulling together and working hard to get this project moving forward, and I think it's going to achieve some great results for economic development in our community. So I'll just close with this excerpt, which is from actually intro of your economic development plan. And I'm not going to read it, but I think that what you see in bold there is really just an important reminder, and important for us to pay this on, that it's really our policies that allow us to keep moving forward. You know, it's not the role, responsibility, or function of government to create, maintain, and expand businesses. It's our role to create the fertile ground and the atmosphere and the environment where the private sector can do what they do best. It's all private sector development, all private sector investment, which has created all of this, and continues the growth. Our function is to do what you all keep doing very well every year, and every month, and every day, between, between the council up there at the dais, and my colleagues here on the leadership team, creating the infrastructure, the policies, the services that are what attract and allow businesses to grow. So I'll close with that, and I will just be happy to answer any questions or comments or input that Joe may have.
Any questions for Mr. Tweedy? Or comments? Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Oh, I just, you know, it just always amazes me. We always talk about how the City of Taveries is really growing. When you put it all on paper like this, and you look at everything that's happening in the City of Taveries, I mean, it's just, it's wonderful, and, you know, all these businesses coming into our community, it helps lower the tax rate on our citizens, so just keep it up and keep those businesses coming in. Thank you.
That's the condensed version.
You're right.
Thank you.
Mr. Tweedy, before you leave, sir, just a couple real quick things. Dora Queen, I want to go on that. Is that open? If it's not open, when will it be open? I want to check that out. That would be really cool. Not yet. The last update I had, and I'm glad you brought that up, from the, the owners, they're looking at it probably about mid-March. They're still doing some final, you know, construction items on the vessel itself. Really big thing they're waiting on is all their Coast Guard approvals, which, you know, they're at the mercy of, of Washington on that, and they expect that any time now. And once they get that, finish up the, the improvements they have to interior-wise, they'll be up and running hopefully next month. I'm really excited about that one. And the docks, the pilings are gone, but there's no green light on bringing, I mean, pilings are going to have to get right back in. I would imagine that would be the first step. So pilings are gone. What's happening now is our, our, our team, our design-built team continues to move forward with the permitting. That's a big element of this, and they've been, you know, moving along well, and they, in fact, my most recent discussion with them, you know, things are moving quicker than they expected with that. So that's, that can be a real constraint, and that's really good that they're, they don't anticipate any issues with any of the agencies. We await insurances final, final, and they have seven different underwriters, seven different reinsurers, ones of one that AIG, that have to go through all this stuff, and we brought you the, the whole package just before the, the end of the year. They're going through all that, the whole guarantee maximum price package and design, just to make sure they're all good with it, and we expect some regulatory any day from them. Once they do, we're, we're ready to go with the notice to proceed with the contract. It will take some time. It'll take about five months or so for all the fabricating, for all the dock pieces, and the pilings and all those things to be completed. Meanwhile, you know, they can't do anything until the permitting process is done anyway. So that's moving forward. In a perfect world, that'll take five to six months, and then they'll be able to start actually in the, in the beginning of June or so, start sinking pilings and dock pieces in, and that'll be about a six-month build. So. I think that would make people so happy when they see that starting to go back. I think it would certainly make me happy. It's really exciting, Mr. Tweedy. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tweedy. We'll move on to Tarot, which is converted to various nature parks with our chief.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council, for the audio right of this, Mr. Keefe, Fire Chief. And, Mr. Tweedy, you achieved something in life they have never seen me speechless, so they might want you to come back for a part of the time when I get long. they might want you to come back for a part of the time when I get long-winded. So Agenda, uh, number 10 tonight is, uh, is titled Prescription Burn of the Taveris Nature Park. So the key word there is prescription. That's a purpose law on purpose. Uh, so this would be a, a team presentation with, uh, with me and James Dillon, our Director of Public Works Department, but as Bob mentioned, he's up in Tallahassee chasing funding and support for other, uh, projects going on. So we wish and will, uh, and we want to, to have him have success up there. So he has entrusted this presentation to me. So Bob just went through a lot of the great things we're seeing from the ground up. So with, um, land, there's still, uh, responsibilities that go along with maintaining that land and Prescription Burn is one of the, one of the big ones. So, and we're talking about the River Nature Park, we'll clear right away when that's at. You had some, you had some, uh, exhibits in your agenda packet including a map of the Taveris Nature Park. So we're talking about around 100 acres, right? So here is the official description of this project. The Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, comma, Florida Fire Service, has established a program of wildland vegetative fuel treatment to be affected in and around communities and subdivisions in order to mitigate the risk that homes and property may damage or destroyed by wildfire. So Taveris Nature Park, you've seen it, uh, you know what it looks like. It was, uh, we did have Prescription Burn out there a few years ago and it's time to do it again. Now, it just so happens that we have fallen into a great opportunity here to do that in partnership with the Florida Fire, uh, Agriculture Service. So, um, just to tell you this, firefighters have three heroes. So police officers for obvious reasons, the high voltage people. So when you've got power lines down in your heart gate, you're real glad to see C go and do the show up. But our third is forest fire service. But when, uh, when there's a wildland fire, these are the people that need call. You're real glad to see them. They have, uh, phenomenal skill, experience and they have some big equipment that they can bring, including things that fly. So they have a lot of resources and they know how to do this. So we have invited them to be here tonight. So from the Florida Fire Service, Forestry Service, I'm sorry, I have Supervisor Ken Royhood and his Ops Chief Mike Penn. And so, and then please know that we're also doing this in concert with their PIO and Mark O'Keefe, our Communications Director, has been in communication with their PIO. So everything we're talking about, this is truly a team effort. So I want to ask, um, ask our, our friends from Forestry Service here just come up, tell you what they have planned and you've got their mitigation plan in your agenda packet and then once they finish, we, we can, uh, totally talk about this, vet this out in your committee.
Right.
Thank you, Superintendent. We're here, Mayor, Council, uh, Forestry, Forest Service, Forest Area Supervisor here in Lake County, is my operation manager, Mike Penn. Uh, I'm here to ask any questions they have about this. Basically what we're doing, we're the Libya Director, Fire Chief here or something like that, over our, our works. We're going to do a mitigation part, uh, what we call a, uh, part or something like that. They have, uh, put a lot of effort, there's a lot of science behind this and it's going to be a joint effort, so there's a lot of hazard and risk, uh, and also by us doing it this way, the costs are basically part of it. This follows underneath what we call our mitigation grant, the law of litigation. So we, it's all mostly cost for all our stuff through federal grants. Are there any questions?
Well, uh, I don't know if I've gotten any inputs for the public. I did and I already know who it is, so if you'd like to come up and speak for three minutes.
Thank you, Vance, Yocum 12619, Milwaukee, Taveris. I live across the street from the Taveris Nature Park and, uh, have, uh, and I have bears that come out of that park frequently and attack my neighbor's garbage bin and occasionally mine. Uh, I put ammonia in mine, so it doesn't really get mine, but it gets in the neighbors and drags those bags of trash right across the street into the forest and there's a big mound of trash in there that is left. Um, and so I'm, I guess what I'd say is, and I'd imagine that they have some sort of a wildlife mitigation policy and then frankly, I don't know how many bears are in there, but I don't know whether we want them coming into our neighborhood. Uh, you know, I know that sounds discriminatory, but, uh, the, uh, you know, the cats and the dogs that live there probably don't want to have to compete for, uh, the turf. And so maybe they could explain a little bit about how they're going to deal with all that wildlife that's in there. There also are some people claiming to be living in there that are homeless. Uh, there are also people that we see on the street going down there in private or suspected of dealing drugs, uh, down by that restroom that was put in and that's never been dealt with apparently. I know there's neighbors further down the street that they see that a lot, so, uh, you've got some issues. Also, there's a fence on the other side of the park over by, uh, the Far Reach Ranch that, uh, is failed. You can drive right through it. I've done it, uh, when I was, uh, looking into the great camping, uh, plan, uh, in the past and, uh, so just, uh, maybe somebody needs to go around that and come up with a plan and, uh, want to make sure that you don't have some people going in there. Uh, and finally, uh, how close can I get if I'm on those partials? They're not listed.
Thank you, Mr. Yer. If you'd like to answer those questions before we move to council?
Yes, I won't talk about the bears. I'll let our forestry partners talk about that, but just a little bit more information about Prescription Burn. So really the, the whole purpose of the Prescription Burn is to thin out that underbrush and to, uh, get rid of the non-indigenous, indigenous species of plants. So, uh, a lot of the plans we're talking about, will we take care of this? And we've discussed all these issues ad nauseam. We have really, uh, debated this in-house completely. Uh, we have all the same concerns. We're concerned about wildlife, so, uh, between our, our partners in forestry, they have a mitigation plan, we have a mitigation plan. We're talking about putting out signage. We're also concerned about roadways, uh, you know, and, uh, closing roads if we have to. The one thing we can't really give you is a specific date because as Mr. Kret mentioned, this is a very scientific process and the weather has to be just right, the humidity levels have to be just right. So they could just come in and say, you know, we're going to, if I say 12 hours before, okay, weather's looking good, radar says it's good, we're burning tomorrow morning starting at 6:00 P.M. So look, then using Mr. O'Keefe, we're ready to get those, those messages out. So Mr. Kret, what, sorry, why?
Uh, yes, me and Simon. It's, uh, this is very weather dependent, no matter what our, our situation, we're pretty much. Uh, what we plan on doing with this, because of the smoking act, so we don't want to shut down the roads, I've got to wait for this, uh, this right, so we've got to be pretty much more things for us, so we've got to wait for the smoke. Out over the lake or over an area that's not really popular, so to speak. 100 acres, we are cooperating, this is also cooperation burn with the Far Reach Ranch. We've had their approval to include part of their property on this, so we're doing minimal damage to the actual property of the reserve that's held. Because more likely what we do is we go in, we put fire lines, break everything up so we can control this stuff. We want to break down the account. In order for us to do that, we cooperate with Far Reach Ranch, so I don't have to go lying, going down to center of their property and deserve to separate the paddles and disrupt all the, uh, species. So they all agreed to do this and separate part of everything they do. Now, cooperation with the animals and stuff, it's been our opinion and stuff that we've documented over the numerous years, things like that, basically animals go deeper into the woods. Within a few days, the fresh burn provides a new transition and it sprays them out and they start eating on the fresh burn. My scene will be passed, the, 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 and homeless, uh, they need, uh, and also brings out fresh growth of, uh, from the trees, will start sprouting, new grass growth within which is green, fresh, we care about. Uh, as far as the, uh, what do you want to call it? Home speaker, I might be out there, that's, uh, my credit on the underbrush, they don't have the place to hide. Okay. For a little fuel stuff that they may do, it's, we don't want to force in that, but again, they don't have the place to hide for, for a little fuel.
Thank you. Anybody in council have any questions?
I just want to add, uh, on the public outreach, we're working very closely with Lake County. We're working with the forestry division. We will have six message boards out, strategic locations, out in the area, in the roads, at the strategic locations and the intersections. We will have a call-in number, is that correct, Mike?
Yes, sir.
We will have a call-in number, uh, the folks can call the city of Taveris, uh, and we'll, uh, tell them all the things that are going out, updated on a regular basis. We are going door-to-door with, uh, to any home within, for the, how many feet, 500, 400?
It's within, maybe it'd be up to 500.
500 feet. Vance will be knocked on, just so you're prepared. Keep your house tidy. It'll be, uh, knocking on his door and others and then leaving notices and information as well. Uh, we'll be doing, using social media, we'll be using our website. We will have a link at our website, uh, for additional information. So we're taking this very seriously. We're planning ahead. Uh, we're putting everything in place with Lake County, the state and the city, uh, and, uh, we're going to make sure that all the residents are aware, uh, they can call if they have any issues, uh, they'll know what to do. So I think it's been, been a very well-coordinated effort and I suspect this will occur in the end of February, beginning of March?
Somewhere in that area.
Somewhere in that area, when the weather's right. So I just wanted to add that.
Also, it's, I know a lot of people have concerns over this, but think of it this way, you actually have major wildfire in there, which we are not controlled. You go, go there, stop it, but depending on the weather concern, you'll have major impact, major shutdowns, things like that for up to several weeks.
I think what you're saying is if we don't get rid of the fuel that has accumulated over the last 10 years, it will be an uncontrolled burn. By us going in there and getting rid of the 10-year-old fuel, uh, it'll be a controlled burn. And in a controlled burn, we can set up hotline, phone numbers, control it and all of that. An uncontrolled burn obviously is not good and the whole purpose of doing this is that we don't have, being the lightning capital of the world, we don't have an uncontrolled burn.
Right, council, would you like to address this topic? I just have a question. The fact that it has to be a floating date because of weather, because we are in event season, if there's a perfect date, but we have, well, any of the events going on, Flames Trains or a Boshur or whatever, then that's going to take, the fire will take a backseat to that event?
No, I don't think we were going to hold off on doing that for an event. You know, the winds are a big thing. An event downtown, uh, may not even be affected depending on where the winds, I mean, if the winds are coming from the north, uh, and heading south, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even affect that event. But we did not plan on holding this up, uh, for a one-day event. This will last one week, I think it was, was it?
Yeah, no, plus, plus if we actually start partying, we'll be over a few hours.
All right, so a few hours. The other thing is, is, you know, we have a grant opportunity here and it's, it's quite costly to do this. This is not going to cost the city anything. So our thinking is while the grant is in hand, while they're geared up to do it, they're leaving one burn out, uh, south of here, right? And you're finishing that one up?
We're the boss of doing that.
Okay, all right. So that one's being finished. We're next on the list and then they move on. If we were to hold them off, uh, we probably would lose the grant, they probably wouldn't come back here for a year, we'd be in the same situation again. It's a good question, but we are not putting, we are not going to stop it for an event.
Thank you.
This is our youth council party. Thank you for being here. Uh, many of them have after-school, uh, tennis, music, you name it. Uh, so they come here for one hour to learn about local government, uh, and then they're off to their evening activities.
I'll make a motion to approve option one, approve the, the Prescription Burn of the Taveris Nature Park area. On second? All right. Uh, motion to second, need further discussion?
I just want to say I like the price.
It's going to make our party. It's definitely needed, so, but thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion to second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, it's time to sit down. Thank you. Which brings us to town 11. Bid award for Lake Francis State Water and Sewer Replacement Projects, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, staff, members of the public and representatives. Uh, I come before you today to ask your approval, our consideration for approval for the bid award for Lake Francis State Water and Sewer Replacement Project. The objective is to award the low bid for the city of Taveris, Lake Francis Water and Sewer Project and execute a contract with the parent low bidder who is T W Joint Venture in the amount of $6,718,402.15 after the FDP state approval for an SRF loan. This project is to replace all the water and sewer piping. Most of you know about this. This is the seventh time I've been, we've been to council on, on different things from the beginning, so, uh, it's not due to some of it and even the newer council has, uh, talked to the project agreement upstate. You'll see in the documents you have, the prior six times it's been to council, you will also see a table on the loans that were approved from planning to, uh, to water design to water piping to the second phase of the station. And, uh, so you will see the total loan approved, uh, preliminarily approved by the FDP for 7.5 million and you will lastly see the table of the bids, which, uh, your parent low bidder was the, uh, the, uh, T C Joint Venture at $6,718,402.15. Uh, your options are to award this bid or not and staff recommends that you do. This will impact, it's impacted into the five-year rate study for the city of Taveris and it has met legal sufficiency, so I am here to answer any questions you may have.
I think the only thing I'd like to add is, uh, we got seven bids, they're all million apart. Uh, so we went out, um, got those seven bids and, uh, one of them, the low bidder, quite frankly, was here a lot asking questions with a very sharp pencil. Uh, and I think the reason this bid came in where it came in is, is they knew, they knew the project very, very well. Sometimes bidders, um, sharpen their pencils and really go after it and fine-tune it and sometimes bidders are very busy and they do overview and they give you a bid. So seven bids, a million apart, usually you'll find that the lower bidder has sharpened their pencil. Sometimes, you know, they underbid it and were very concerned about that, uh, but in this case I can tell you, uh, they did their homework. Correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, the lowest parent bidder, P C W, made six to eight in origemustache and at least three visits here where they spent a lot of time looking over the project, asking questions. They were absolutely, they were all there.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and I didn't receive any public input, uh, so I will close public input and move to council. Make a motion to approve. Um, you have a motion to second, any discussion from council?
I do have, uh, just a little discussion. Mr. Clark, I know the residents are going to be very excited to have this project moving forward and I've spoken about it many a times and, uh, I know you've been out there a lot and I know that they're, uh, they're excited to have this underway. Um, one question that I get from the residents, they always ask, when you're doing this project, are you going to be able to address anything with the stormwater?
No.
Right.
But I will say the roads are all being redone, resurfaced and all, and if the roads are done right with the proper crown, all the crows are being replaced, one will assume it will dump the stormwater out.
Okay. I just want to get clarification on that. Thank you.
Well, my question is, has this company done work for the city before?
No.
And will there be a resident engineer on the property?
Uh, yes, there will and a resident city inspector full-time.
Thank you.
I just have one question for this. So this came in under what the state revolving loan was approved for, so are we able to use that remaining money in the case we do have any mortgages or unforeseen problems? Or is it just top-jatted with the bids?
I will just say for the, the record of 29, this will go on to the state, state will, um...
I will just say for the rent requirement, this will go on to the state's bid, and they may or may not just the ones that they already approved, because the amount that is quoted includes contingent to the, that's regular construction costs. So, you may see change, and you may not. I can't say that for four until they issue their final review. But I'll bring that back to you more when they get approval, and they give us the, the, I remember, so I can, I'll bring that back. But you're writing in the press.
Well, thank you, Ms. Oden, and we have a motion to second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, it's time to sit down.
Thank you, yes.
Which brings us to tab 12, establish the fiscal year 2021 broad budget priorities. City, no question, Mr. Clark.
It's been the past practice of the council to set broad budget priorities, but the city administrative use as guiding principles in developing a budget that is commensurate with the city council's overall budget goals. If we're all rolling in the same direction, the city moves forward, the budget moves forward. So, today, I'm going to be asking for your broad budget goals, after which, I will work with leadership here to create a budget and bring back that budget to you in general. By way of background, we run about seven different areas, six governmental operations. The first one is general government. The general government, which includes things like police, fire, libraries, and things of that nature, those revenues are derived from property taxes and other fees. Our other company, if you will, that we operate is utilities. Utilities includes water, wastewater, sewer, reclaimed water, and stormwater. Their revenues are not derived from property taxes, but they're derived from user fees. We sell water, we sell sewer, we sell stormwater. Solid Waste is our third one, separate company. That's garbage collection. There, the revenues are derived not from property taxes, but from fees for the service that we provide in garbage collection. The fourth one is seaplane, marina, and enterprise. We derive revenues from our fuel sales at our airport, our shop or terminal building, fuel sales, rental from seaplane operator. We have a CRA TIF fund in the downtown, we use some funding for that, and we do use some property taxes for that one. We have our pavilion on the lake, which is very close to being self-sufficient. Most of the revenues there, over 90% of the ride from the rental income we get from the pavilion. We have our capital projects, we have a five-year capital program, we'll be updating that after we hear you tonight, and then we'll update that five-year capital program and bring that back to you. Of course, that's a mixture of grants, impact fees, property taxes, and things of that nature. And then we have our debt service program, and every year, we provide you what we did for debt service, we'll update that, and this year, we'll be giving you a debt service management program, which will talk and speak to debt service capacity from now and into the future. I've included three exhibits. One speaks to the historical information on our city budget, the other one is about the future of our budget, and then current things that are underway, current projects, et cetera. I'm just going to highlight a few things there. Today, I'll just read the last part about the history of the budget over the last 10, 12 years. When benchmarked, our budget, when benchmarked against other communities of similar size in Florida, it reveals that Taveries comes out on top in terms of efficiencies, including number of employees per capita for various services, such as police, fire protection, which make up a significant part of many cities' general budget. Positive economic conditions that Taveries is beginning to enjoy today did not materialize without hard work by this city council and others, all the employees, and a civic entrepreneurial approach to governing, taking calculated risks, being creative, and overcoming fiscal challenges. I hope you take a look at it, it really tells a story of where we were when the streets were empty, when people left town, the packing house closed, this was a government town only, the hospital wasn't here, and people were coming up and saying, there's no jobs. What can you do? And they all got together in this room for two years, developed a plan with the council to take some calculated risks, do some creative projects, and turn the city around. And I'm proud to have been a part of that, wasn't here at the beginning of it, but inherited some of the things that some of the people were doing with previous city councils. So, take a look at the history of that, I'm sure you already have. As far as the future goes, we've been pretty savvy, fiscally savvy on the revenues. We have a CPI for our utilities, so that we're never going to find ourselves in a situation where we're underfunded. We have a CPI for garbage, Consumer Price Index increases, so that we don't underfund making our city clean and picking up the garbage. The seaplane base and marina is being rebuilt, you know, 98% of the funds are coming from seven reinsurers. We'll hear, Tweedy said earlier, an answer pretty soon, they're going to go ahead and fund it, and we budget it for our match on that, our 2%. Pavilion in the lake, just about self-sufficient, it's an economic engine, it's an economic driver, it fills all our hotels, all of our restaurants. I constantly hear the hotel owners saying, if it wasn't for it, I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing. So, we're, it's doing what it's supposed to do, creating a lot of jobs, you know, photography, wedding planners, catering companies, seaplane rides, just flower shop moved to town because of it, I mean, it's just quite an economic driver there. And we continuously look forward next year, you know, to being self-sufficient, and we're very close. The capital proven program I talked about, five years, the debt service I talked about, you'll be getting your debt service report, you'll have capacity numbers in there for you as well. When it comes to the future of the budget, I can tell you that revenues are going to go up, we're going to get more income into the city, we, property values are going up, there's been some growth, you've approved a few commercial businesses, you just did one tonight, plumbing supply companies moving into town, that's going to increase revenues for your down, for your community. You've also approved some subdivisions, they're building houses, that's going to increase revenues. And I can tell you, expenses are going up. The cost of doing business in the United States of America and in Taveries is going up, electricity's going up, fuel prices going up, oil's going up, price of steel's going up, healthcare's going up, everything's going up, has and will continue every year. So, both revenues and expenses will go up, and that will reflect it in your next year's budget. The last exhibit I gave you was the top 25 projects. I've listed the top 25 projects that are underway, these are projects you previously approved, previously budgeted for, they're either designed, engineered, waiting for insurance company, they give their blessing, waiting for an engineer to put a stamp, waiting for a permit to be done. But you've got 25 projects that are underway in the city, that are many, multi-year projects, and so we're very busy, we've got a lot going on, and there's a lot more going on over the next year and year and a half. Also listed, the top 25 initiatives, everything from benchmarking, police department accreditation, to our ISO rating. There are a lot of initiatives that we're doing at the library, in our recreation program, in every department, and a lot of these are new initiatives that are underway today and going into the next year. So, take a look at all the projects that we're working on, that you're going to see come out of the ground over the next year, two or three, all the new initiatives that we're doing without hiring new people. You know, my staff is looking at me sometimes, saying, new initiative, new initiative, are you going to add more people? And, you know, we have to balance that. I lay this all out for you, because you're about ready to tell me what you're looking for for next year, and you need to do that in a backdrop of knowing what we're already doing, and that we'll be coming out of it around next year, in addition to whatever you add. That's all I have for you right now. I'll give it back to the mayor to go ahead and discuss your next year's broad budget priorities, which I will listen to, take in, and sprinkle amongst the budget that comes back to you in the upcoming budget cycle. Back to you, Mayor.
Alright, well, I will kick us off with my short list of my priorities, which I'm channeling my inner Kirby Smith. Like to increase the reserves, have the same level of service, lower the millage rate if we can, finish the public works project, getting it organized, find funding for that, which I know Mr. Dillon is working on right now. Continue road paving and see if we can increase that if possible, so that we can get ahead of the road pavings that have always been behind. Barely finished the marina, which everybody's excited about. Had pavilion earn money this year, instead of us being close to it, I wonder if there's exceeded. And then the Moon Park Playground, getting that worked out so that we can have a safe place for the kids to play.
Any other council members want to jump in?
I'd like us to see, to give the West End of Main Street some attention. We continue, we continue to put that on the back burner, and that is a gateway into our downtown. We need to spend some time and some energy in that. All of the ones, things you listed, I certainly agree with, reserves being a very important one as well, but West End of Main Street would definitely be a big one for me.
Mr. Stevenson?
Did you look at my list?
No.
A lot of the things on there, what I have as well. You know, I'd like to keep the millage low. This past year, city of Taveries was fortunate, we had one of the largest decreases in the county. I know we are anticipating growth, I know expenses do go up, but I feel that we can continue to deliver our high level of services and still be able to lower the village with the businesses that we have committed to our community. Last year, we were able to increase our road resurfacing program by 30%. I'd like to see that increase, I'd like to see us, you know, at least 30%, if not a 50% increase. Keep our reserves healthy, like to continue to see us protecting the environment. I know that we're continuing to pursue grants up in Tallahassee for stormwater improvement projects. I want to make sure that we keep our small-town feel. We have our events, our 4th of July celebration and our Christmas lights, that all promote that community feel. I want to see, make sure that we continue with that. But I'd also like to see if we, you know, all the events that we do put on, I'd like to see if we can tweak those, you know, just do an inventory of all the events that we do have, see if there's some places that we can maybe cut, see if we can maybe find some sponsors for those events that could reduce the cost for our taxpayers. Want to make sure we take care of our hard-working staff, we've got some of the best employees around, we're very fortunate for them. And I know, according to, as Mr. Curry said, our benchmarking, we do a lot with a lot fewer people than most cities do, so I just want to make sure that our employees and our staff are taken care of, keep improving the overall appearance of our city. I want to make sure that we have, in all of our areas, clean support partnerships. As Ms. Boggs has pointed out, we do have our public works currently working with Lake Tech on a very important initiative. I want to see us continue to support that project, as well as any other partnerships, because by working together, we can accomplish so much more. We have the Tamador Trail, I want to see us continue to support that, complete a majority of the projects that we already have on our books. It's already been pointed out, we have our seaplane base that is currently in the final stages, hopefully, so hopefully we can get that done pretty soon here. I'd also like to, you know, continue, I think every year, we look at this, and it competes with the other projects on the budget, but I would like us to continue looking at, you know, the possibility of videotaping our council meetings. And last but not least, I want to continue the economic diversity that our economic development team has done such a wonderful job, and continue to bring businesses into our community, because as we know, when we bring businesses in, that helps reduce the tax rate on our, the rest of our residents and our businesses as well. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Stevenson?
The first thing on my list, and obviously, I don't disagree with anything that's been said previously, we kind of tend to repeat ourselves, and you get this related to it. So, first and foremost, I agree with everything that's already been said, that those are great ideas. Water, I think we should really protect our water. You know, Mr. Drew, you told me that the difference in the water when we put in the eco park and visibility and stuff, but I think we should always make sure that we stay really concerned about the quality of water, and particularly like Dora, but truly in all the waters of Taveries. Streets are a big concern, I was reading in the initiatives about this pavement preservation, and it made me excited that we can spend, you know, $1 instead of $6 to save a road, those types of numbers, because we've never had a budget, you know, you have a budget where you're falling down, you have a budget where you're staying even, you have a budget where you're progressing. I'd like to see a road get to a point where it's progressing, and I think a very innovative way to do that could be to preserve a road instead of reconstruct a road. That made me very excited to have one, six of those cars. Looking forward, the gateways, you know, we've all talked about these certain gateways that come in and out of Taveries, and I'd like that to be very attractive to folks that have an entertainment district downtown, so you have to bring them in. So, I think, you know, let's put some honey, a bit of sugar on those, make them beautiful, clean and nice. I think I've talked before about some, you know, gimmicky thing like navigational lights or something on those entrance ways to our downtown areas, but I think folks would also appreciate it. If you live along those gateways, you get a lot of traffic. I always loosely call it, you know, living on a racetrack because of the traffic that comes through. So, I think they would really appreciate the folks that do have to deal with that traffic. Would really deal if we could just make our gateways, our entrances very attractive to folks. Communication, I think Mr. Akim is awesome with all that computer stuff and all that stuff that I don't understand that well. And I know we have a website, I go to, that from time to time, I read the agendas and stuff when they come out, and I'll also just go in there just to proof off, but I think communication's a big deal, I think it's really, really important that everybody knows exactly what's going on, like, you know, we have sunshine balls, we don't do that in secret, and I wish everyone participated more. I mentioned last year to Mr. Drew, that catalog between jail and the courthouse, if somehow we could, like, get an electronics sign or something up there to advertise our events, and advertise, you know, like, public service announcements and just the cool stuff, you know, maybe we could have a sign up there electronically, you know, like Mr. Akim, but, you know, like, pilings are coming out, so then everybody that drives by there, they know that pilings are coming out, the new pilings are going in, you know, if you're five months, stuff like that, to get the word out to people, kind of force it to them. But we need that also on 441, I don't know how we could pull that off, I don't know billboard, I don't know how we can pull that off. Communication, through innovative things like getting, you know, if we could rent the catalog from the counter or something. And then that Commerce Park, I'd love to see more progress in the Commerce Park, I'd like to see cool businesses, like the t-shirt business can be in. I know Mr. Tweedy had talked about, what is it, request for proposals for like a craft beer, or like a craft hooch, like liquor place or something like that, something really fresh. I think that's, I want to keep going and going, I agree with everybody, so that gives me about a third or five.
Ms. Pester?
Yes, I have mine listed here. Yeah, I agree with what everyone has said, of course. You know, move forward with the trail, I think that's important, for sure. Our comp plan, our comprehensive plan, that we need to finish up our 20-year plan, so it covers the next 20 years, we need to do that. Our special events, you know, I want to continue to support, we've got like 20-something events, but I'd like to see some events that focus more, like on the summer months and some of our down months that we still seem kind of empty, and I know it's hard because there aren't people here, but I just think we need to continually try to bring people into our city. And then the marina, let's get this done, stay on top of that, move as fast as plane on it. on it, and I want it to operate 365 days a year. It gives people a reason to come to our city. And, you know, when it's holiday time, because we can talk about a Christmas village, we can talk about this and that, a Christmas village lasts for three weeks, and you spend all that money. For the same money, we could get out there and build this beautiful fire and water fountain that no one here has. What an attraction, what a, you know, what a reason to come to Taveries. You know, if you don't, if you're not interested in seaplanes and you're not interested in other things, I don't know anyone who wouldn't be interested in seeing this beautiful seaplane. We are America's seaplane city. I think we need to erect a beautiful fountain, and I guarantee it will be a draw and it will be part of our economic development plan. I think that people would come, people would travel here to see this, and I'm not talking about something silly, I'm talking about something very nice. And at Christmas time, it could be, and it plays music, and at Christmas time, it would do Christmas music, and the lights could be Christmas lights. St. Patrick's Day, it could be green lights. Valentine's Day, it could be red lights. I mean, Easter could be pastel lights. I mean, there's a way to build these things where it is something to come see every single day of the year, 365 days a year. So I want y'all all, I'm talking to the audience, but I really should be talking to y'all, I want y'all to consider this and think about the draw that this would be in our, in our downtown. Another thing that I'm thinking about is a, I'm not trying to compete against the private sector, but we have, because the private sector won't jump on this one because it's too small, but it would do a lot for us. When we have all these people come to our events, and we have a lot of people come from out of town, and they come in RVs, I'm thinking about, we've got some property that's not being used, that's within walking distance of downtown, I would like y'all to think about a pocket RV park. It would be something we could do ourselves, since it's going to cost a lot of money. I mean, we could do it in-house, a lot of this, everybody thinks about money, but it would be short-term, whether it would be 10 days or whatever it would be, it would be short-term. They'd come in, they'd have a place to park, and I'm not trying to compete against the private sector, because nobody's got property downtown that they want to put a RV park, but we just happen to have some kind of out-of-site, it's not property that would, would be an eyesore to look at, it's kind of tucked away. I want y'all to think about that, a pocket RV park, be small. How many do we think I could fit there? 50, I could fit 50 RVs. And that's people, people constantly ask me about, do you not have anywhere, they'd like to be within walking distance, a lot of them travel with little golf carts, we're a golf cart community, they could travel downtown, just ways to keep them here, because when you send them elsewhere, sometimes they don't come back here. But if you've got them here, you can hold them captive, you know, with fire and water and fountains and music and, and just, you know, all kinds of things, all the food and all the entertainment that we have here and the events. Okay, so I'm going to end that with economic development. The next thing I want to talk about is, I know we've got our retirement plan, our employee retirement plan, and I know we've been trying to transition, you know, because we've had that local private pension plan, and I think we've moved about everyone, but you haven't moved this. I think we've got a few employees left. You've got, I don't know which employees you have left, I think, how many do you think we have left? That and the city council, you know, getting everybody on the FRS plan. I'd like to see that work through. I think that's the end. Don't we have just about everybody in it?
We don't have everybody. We've got, the police department just went, the fire department just went FRS this year. I think police went, last year, general employees except for a group went, about 10 years ago, and so we do have.
Yes, so we've got, yeah, so whatever, whatever, I think we've, what did you say, four? We've got, still got four employees and council members that haven't been discussed or moved into this FRS?
That is correct.
Correct, okay. I'd like to see us move forward with that, get this, get this done, because this is something we've been working on for how many years, Sean? Been a lot of years we've tried to make this transition?
Yeah, I think it's been about a 10-year program to get out of this private pensions that are hurting cities and go into the Florida Pension Plan, which is the strongest retirement program.
So reading here, I think in my research, I found there's nine, you know, between city council and four other, so we've got nine people that have not, but that's something we need to talk about for this year's budget.
I can bring it back to the budget, you guys can make your decision during the budget time.
Get that done, and I guess that's, I guess that's it. That's it for my, it looks like we're into good times. I will announce, I'm not siding anyway, but just so y'all know, Trump was acquitted on all charges, so that can be good or bad, however you feel, but I think it's good for the economy right now, so I think we're into good times.
All right, did you get all that?
I've got all of your budget priorities. What I will do is work with the team, put those together, and I will be bringing this back in June, and there will be June, July, August, September, there will be probably at least two, four, six, eight public meetings for the public to weigh in on the budget, and hear the council deliberate, as they have every year, on things that will not make it in the budget, things that will make it in the budget, what the millage rate will be. And then in September, there'll be two public hearings. Usually the first two months, you're hearing the council deliberate, discuss what's going in, what's not going in, what the millage rate might be, and then in September, the public has two opportunities to come up, be heard by the council, and then eventually you'll adopt your budget in September. And of course, we're talking about a budget that begins October 1st, 2020, and runs for a year and ends on September 30th, 2021. And that's it.
All right, well, that brings us to new business, any new business?
I do have something I'd like to bring up, but there's been a lot of talk recently about business tax receipts and possibly the county getting rid of those in some of the other cities. And as Mr. Tweedy pointed out, Taveries is a very friendly, very friendly to businesses, and I wanted to see what we can do to get more businesses into our community. I know that, you know, the City of Taveries collects the business tax receipts, and, you know, it all sounds good to try to do what we can to get rid of taxes on businesses and to make things easier for businesses and not to have government intervention. So I don't know if, if we can maybe look at the possibility of getting rid of the business tax receipts in the City of Taveries, I don't know if staff can possibly put something together, looking at the pros and cons and bring that back to council and see if that's something that we want to possibly do or look at.
Yes, we could do some, do diligence and research on your business tax receipts program, come back at the next council meeting, tell you what you're currently doing, what the revenues are, what it's used for, and then give you some pros and cons on reducing it, eliminating it, or keeping it. We can do that. Thank you.
I wanted to bring up the, the different events we attend in city functions that, you know, it's obviously impossible for the mayor and the vice mayor to attend, all of them. If we should probably maybe have a schedule, I've been a part of different organizations and as board members, we have a schedule. For instance, the month of January, where maybe would be Vice Mayor Fisters, or month, Mr. Stevenson, it could be February, and so on, and then have an alternate, like we do with the different boards we sit on. Just something to consider so that we have a presence at every one of them. I'm enjoying attending all of them, it's exciting for me, obviously, but there's times that I won't be able to, and I wouldn't mind attending if another board member is attending as well, but it would just be a little more organized and no guilt that nobody's there.
We can bring back the annual calendar for upcoming events. I mean, I've got a 12-year history, I have a pretty good idea when they are and what they are, they might move a day or two. I'll bring back the calendar, and you guys can discuss which ones you want to attend, and then we'll shoot you reminders throughout the year, you know, you're scheduled to attend. If you can't, something's going to come up, those does. I usually always have a staff first, either I'm there or somebody from the leadership team is there, and then I'll call another council member and see if they're available, if one of you can't make your scheduled attendance. So I'll bring back a calendar, you guys can kind of go through it, talk about which ones you want to go to.
Seeing no other new business, we'll move on to old business. Seeing no old business, we'll move on to historical perspective with Taveries Historical Society. Ms. Burley?
I have an event you can all go to tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Lake County Historical Museum. Nilda Comas, the sculptor of the statue of Mary McLeid, based on, that is going to take the place of Kirby Smith's statue in Washington DC, is going to speak, and we want to get a good turnout for that. That's tomorrow at 7:00 PM. In October, I did a timeline up until 1924, so I'm going to continue that timeline for 10 years. In 1925, the Kiwanis Club was chartered. On May 1st, City Attorney Art Hamlin abolished the offices of Tax Collector, Tax Assessor, Town Treasurer. The Town Clerk would perform the duties from now on. In 1926, the Taveries High School was built on Orton Mansour. The final link of the Taveries-Leesburg Federal Road to be awarded on September 23rd extends from Dead River Bridge. 1927, the census was 1,617, and Taveries School opened with 214 pupils, and the PTA held its first meeting that day. 1929, the stock market crashed and ended a boom in the real estate. Osceola Hotel closed. 1930, the population was 1,090. That went down. In March, Harry Johnson was re-elected mayor. 1931, St. Clair Abrams died on June 5th. In October, the Mount Dora-Taveries Road was under construction. 1934, Alfred Street is going to be widened to 29 and 1/2 feet.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. Which brings us to audience to be heard.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Drury, city staff, Mr. Williams, here is Santoro Wellhard. Quick comment about Tab 10. Under Tab 10, in your U reference, the homeless have lived in the, in the nature. In the presentation, nobody addressed, who's going to be responsible for making sure they roll out of here before the first time?
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Anybody else from the audience? Master Watkins, since you're closer, will Mr. Yefen's way?
Master Watkins, 805 Summer Road in Taveries. Uh, two things. One, the subdivision that's behind the new Publix, I'm asking you to start getting this information, when you drive down there at night, it is so dark down that road. I want to know who's responsible for the proper lighting, getting the streetlights or whatever. I know some people live down that area, and I went down there and I almost ran off the road, because it's a sharp curve there. Y'all don't go on top of it? I would like for one of the council people to drive down that road at night, and you'll see, and I don't know who's responsible for it. And also agreeing about the west side of Taveries needing some attention in being beautified, please put that on your calendar, try to do some work down in the west side, if you could. So...
What's it in the road?
Slim Maywood.
Slim Maywood, thank you.
Right beside Publix?
Yes.
Slim Maywood.
Yeah, it goes all the way down to that new subdivision.
We can, we can let you, we can look at it and tell you what all the options are for lighting the many roads that aren't lit, that being one of them, and get, and give you an idea of what it costs and things like that.
Thank you, Master Watkins. Mr. Yefen?
I was waiting for Mr. Drury to say, that's a county road, so we don't do it. Quickly, three items. One is, we were talking earlier about Taveries State Department Bears. My, my question is, why can't you put a fence along that entire stretch to prevent the bears from intruding into the neighborhood there? You're bears, just like if you had dogs or something else, it's like a nuisance, I think is what they call it, definition. Same as if you have a swimming pool and you don't have a fence around it. And the other thing is, I think that since they're Taveries bears, probably you ought to subsidize the bear-proof trash cans that all residents want there, because right now they cost $40. Next is budget goals, you talked about those. Videos, I will repeat my annual request that the city make videos. And then you also, I'm glad to hear some talk about benchmarks and so forth, but I think benchmarks and metrics for each department, like the cost per employee and so forth, should be included in each departmental section, and it should show the three-year trend, the prior three years plus the forecast trend. And finally, you talk about events, and I would also encourage that you shift events to being self-paying and not subsidizing as much, there's, I see some of them, Mount Dora, where they get these outside firms, they come in, they put it on, I think they pay the fees and everything, and there may be pluses or minuses to that, I'm sure Mr. Drury knows, but I think if that would be part of what you should do, start moving towards it, because you have kind of an entertainment section, but yet right now, it seems taxpayers paying burden for a lot of this, and there ought to be some sort of a, a plan to shift these to self-making events. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Yefen. Anybody else from the audience? And then we will close, audience to be heard, and move on to reports. Mr. Drury?
I've got a list of the meetings, I updated it, the, or two meetings that were not put down correctly. One was P&amp;Z, code enforcement, P&amp;Z, so take a look at those. I gave you the updated schedule for that. And then the Lake County League of Cities has moved its location from the, what's the name of that?
Late Receptions.
Thank you. Late Receptions to the Golf Club off Highland Drive. So if you're looking for the League of Cities meeting place, which is every month, don't go to Late Receptions, go to the Golf Club in Mount Dora, because it's changed. And I updated that on the schedule as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Ms. O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. O'Keefe?
Two things, Mayor, the county, Public Safety answer 2029, and one has just announced that you can now text from your, any cell phone, cell phone, at 911, so that's on the Facebook and Instagram night, so that's a new feature that's available to all citizens throughout the county. And in that vein, there is a strong weather system moving through Florida tomorrow night, overnight Thursday and Friday morning up to 3:00 AM, so keep your weather radios on and be aware and have a plan.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. It's supposed to be quite windy. Mr. Tweedy?
Just a quick save-the-date reminder for Plan experience barbecue coming up here this month, February 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Tweedy. Mr. Clark?
Hi, I'm Dr. Yefen.
Ms. Bublins? Ms. Rogers?
Just a few cool things. The Mobile Recreation Center, Rec Rover, will be at Lake Niagara Park this Saturday, thanks to the Recreation Department. They're going to roll it out, this November 2nd pop-up, and we're excited about that, that's a very busy... pop-up and we're excited about that, that's a very busy and vibrant park. Classical guitarist, if you have nothing to do, I'll show you next Thursday at 12:30. A fabulous guitarist from Orlando will be performing at the library as a free concert, bring some weed and enjoy the music, it's free and it's, I can't wait. And then also next Thursday at 5:30, six hundred little girls in their desks will convert on the pavilion and we are excited to host father-daughter dance. And if you do not, you can come down to the pavilion, to the pier and watch those little girls. It's amazing, I mean, they are just, it was, it's a miniature prom, they got everything on, their hair, their nails, everything, it's amazing, it is fun, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Ms. Hovin?
I have nothing, Ms. Yef.
Mr. Fitzgerald? I almost missed you, Chief, anything?
Little bit, thank you.
All right, Mr. Williams?
Julie and I are small-time back, RVers with a truck camper and in several trips that we've been out west, we have stayed at municipal RV parks that are small and little touristy areas. They're kind of fun. I had never thought about that for Taverres, but, and the proponent has left, so she didn't get to hear him say it, but not a bad idea.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Stevenson?
Chief Keefe, that was really, that blanket was pretty neat that lady did, that's really, oh, I'm sorry, she's still here. I'm sorry.
She's still here. It's a world, it's a life.
Okay, sorry. Sometimes I should just be quiet. Man, that was very nice what you did, that was very sincere and cool, that was a neat moment. So thank you for doing that. Chief Keefe, thank you for your service. Sorry, I didn't know you were there first of all, and I followed you, of course. Thank you, sir, for what you did and everybody else.
I'm surprised you didn't break up with the channel or me. In here. Okay. Ms. Williams?
I'd like to thank all the department heads, I've been touring the departments, I'm about done, and it has been wonderful, I've enjoyed the time with each and every one of you and getting to know your staff. And you all wear two and three hats at bay times and very well done, thank you. And lastly, the quote of the day would be limitations live only in our minds, but if we use our imaginations, our possibilities become limitless. And the author is Jamie Palloneidi, I'm sure I butchered his name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Santur?
Pastor Watkins, sorry that I missed the African-American Heritage Festival. I understand it was a little itchy with the weather, but I wish everything could have went a little better, but I understand that the evening before was well-attended, so glad to hear that. But yeah, I wish I could have been there, it's always a good event, I always look forward to that and there's always the next year.
Yes, sir.
Yes, but knowing Ms. Rogers enjoyed the senior shakedown, what an event that was, what we had, seventy-five people that showed up for that, it was great. Talked to one gentleman there, eighty-nine years old, out there dancing, it was just great, just, you know, it's amazing the program that the city of Taverres has for everybody, you know, the seniors, the youth, you name it, we've got something for everybody, it's just great. And the gentleman that I spoke to, he was from the villages, he was down visiting some friends, so we brought people from all over, I thought it was, that was really great. I forgot something else, but I didn't write it down. So that's all I have, Mayor. Back to you.
All right, and once again, thank you for having me, Pastor Watkins, we got a winning ticket, but...
No, we didn't.
Okay, but I was just supposed to give my face painted, so I just didn't want to embarrass you guys, so. Without further ado, we'll go ahead and close this meeting, meeting adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.